John Kama Gharani Vedic me daavani savunnaanu Alag etajumadaaru Sawadalu tejas karani koda Isamyan diskuni Thajumachay bolisindiga Ne parvapar bana jasuk Now heartily inviting my brother Please come forward and preach the word of the Lord God bless you, God bless you
Ee taikda chapa As Lord leads you can go up
10 is okay Introduction, okay
Go 10 15
Hallelujah The Lord bless you I greet you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ I don't know if brother Charlie told you In our country if you greet people they don't answer they are saying go back so can I go Okay, I greet you in the name of the Lord For a few minutes just take your seats First of all I'd like to appreciate my friend here Pastor Nishya For allowing me to stand here Pastors as shepherds By nature jealousy of who stands here Because some shepherds can give them poison Kill the sheep He has to be careful So God bless you for allowing me I think in 2017 or 18 I came here I had lunch there The top part was not there I came with him The servant of God was here I was going to be with the Lord But I still remember what he did When I was preaching at pastor Rajendra Rajendra What's his name?
Rajendra
Yeah, when I was pastor Rajendra Pastor Peter came on a bike And attended the service We had supper together with him Amen Another place He came Hallelujah And I still remember he gave me a cloth to go and make a suit Yeah, he remember Now I'm not saying you do this, no I'm that's what he did Hallelujah I come from Zambia I was in a church In a certain town When I left brother Charlie became the pastor Then brother Charlie did something which many pastors cannot do He told the church he said me I like to be moving as a missionary So the church chose another pastor Who is his pastor now? Who is my son-in-law? Is mine to my daughter I have been blessed To move around Because of brother Charlie Hallelujah I've been to so many countries Last year I was with him in Europe Went to Belgium, France, Germany, Holland were with him He's a very humble servant of God Hallelujah Continue to pray for him And to pray for the pastors Sorry we are come late Because of one reason I'll mention physical reason and the spiritual for the same thing As we got near this place a tree fell and closed the road And the vehicles were coming so we had to go another route As believers We don't look at things naturally We look at things spiritually In the natural When Jesus was dying on the cross Those who are not spiritual Those who didn't have the revelation We are crying But those who had the revelation They saw his piece of bread on the cross They looked beyond Into Peter And saw Jesus In his theophany Preaching to those who refused to repent in the days of Noah And they were not crying He was preaching They killed him They were not crying why? They saw him in a theophany body Preaching in prison When that tree fell I didn't look at that It's a spiritual reason The devil didn't want us to arrive The devil was defeated on Calvary And we have arrived They were defeated Shall we pray? Gracious heavenly Father standing this place tonight Take all the glory and honor The devil tried to hinder us brought down trees That was a physical but spiritually we knew he was trying to stop us we are here Bless the pastor here bless his family bless ministers deacons trustees elders Bless his church oh God As we come to this part of the way I pray that we decrease With my brother to judge you come down and minister to your children They have not come to hear us or see us Or to see their brothers or sisters but they've come to see and hear you Speak to them in the name of Jesus Christ amen I'm told tomorrow there will be two services Who split our subject with three So tonight Tonight for about one hour we'll do the introductions Shall we rise to our feet as we read in the book of Acts chapter nine I'm going to ask my brother to read the interlude because of time so again Damaskula ananya no ka shesurundenu Prabhu darshana mandu ananya ani athane pilivaga athadu prabhuva idigone ninnu unnanenu Andukuprabhuva prabhu neevulechi Tinnanidhanu badina vee diki veli yuda anuvaani enta Tarsiru vadaina soulu anuvaani koraku vichari chimmu Idigoo athadu pradhana cheshunnaad Athadu ananya no no ka manushudu lopaleki vachi Thanu dhrushti punda netlu talameeda chaitran chutta chuchi Yunnadani chepen Andukananya prabhuva ee manushudu ersherem lo nee parshilaku yentho Keedu chesunnaadani athane koche anekalavanna ventini Ikaduna nee namum retti pradhana cheyi varandarini Bandinchitaka thadu pradana yaachikalavanna adhikarama pandiyunnaadani utramichin Andukuprabhu neevellamu Anne chinnalu yedutano rajalu yedutano israelalu yedutano Na namanu varinchidaku etadu neenu earpachukurina sadhana mayunnad Etadu na namamu koraku yinni shramalanu anubaim pulanu Neenu itanike chupudanani athane to chepen I would like to read verse 15 But the Lord said unto him go thy way For he is a chosen vessel and to me to bear my name before the Gentiles and kings And the children of Israel Hallelujah God bless the reading take yours Hallelujah Are you here? Can we start? The subject to take is Now I'm going to explain destiny means this Every human being when he comes on earth All of you here Because you have come on earth God has a destiny for you Meaning Things that will happen to you From the time you are born To the time you leave the earth in this body Destiny Now destiny Whatever God has prepared for you You pass through it You pass through the hard things You pass through difficult things There are times you suffer There are times you cry There are times you laugh There are times you rejoice But All that is part of your destiny God has already seen your end If you understand saying As you are now You do not know what will happen tomorrow next week or next year whatever But God knows He knows your beginning Another thing I'm laying the foundation In destiny There is no power In heaven or earth There is no demon There is no satan Who can change your destiny He can attack you He can attack your children Attack your wife, attack your husband He can attack your family People can say all sorts of things The destiny that God has prepared for you no one can change it Number two Number two Something will be looking like tomorrow God willing When God prepares your destiny He does not prepare it when you are in your mother's womb He prepared your destiny in eternity when you were in him Number two Every destiny Is promoted Is encouraged What God will do If you are a man or a woman Like what the prasangiku daunagani God will raise up people That will encourage you To reach your destiny Number three Which we shall do tomorrow afternoon Pay attention Justice God gives you people to encourage you to reach your destiny Satan who raise people to push you back from your destiny I've really understood what you're saying There will be those who encourage you There will be those who will pull you back That's why you need the Holy Ghost The Holy Ghost Gives you the mind of God And the Holy Ghost Will be telling you This brother This sister The devil was brought them to push you back So you avoid them The same Holy Ghost That brother That sister This sister This sister That brother That preacher Are the ones have sent to encourage you Have you understood? That's why even in your marriage be careful Marry the one God gives you You can be discouraged Now we are ready here There was a man called Paul Before he was called Paul he was Saul Saul Is Saul Was a Pharisee Saul was a Pharisee When Jesus came and joined the Baptists and preached the word of God Denominations and Saul were very annoyed So he went to the elders of their denomination Can you give me letters authorizing me To go to Damascus And go and arrest all believers Because they are confusing people They are taking people out of denomination So they gave him letters Destiny Jagatavinandi Your destiny We will change the things Indukodasa In the sight of God In the mind of God Paul Was the first star in the hands of Jesus That's how God knew him But in flesh This boommeeda He was a Pharisee Beating Christians beating believers That's how the people knew him But God knew him as a star in the right hand of How many stars according to revelation were in the hand of Jesus? Seven Eight nakshetral Star number one Modadi nakshetramo Paul Paulu Star number seven So even when Paul was going to became a Pharisee Even when he gave letters to beat believers Do you know that when they were killing Deacon Stephen of the message Paul is the one who held the clothes of those who killed him Yes man I'm sure you are aware of that Ah? When they were stoning When they were stoning Stephen I'm sure I don't need to read it You have preached it Do I need to read it? No You know it They caught Stephen Who believed The message Of the first star Paul Shemenchendi On the day of Pentecost Unna raikada Prajalu rodhyamalu nochukuni varange seranti prabhu ney su krishna labaktesamponday And you received the Holy Ghost That's chapter two thirty-seven down Stephen believed he was baptized filled with the Holy Ghost Hallelujah Then denominations got him To kill him They took him out of the city They killed him Not with small stones Those blocks you use for building When they removed their jackets The one who kept them Was Saul And as they were killing Stephen Saul was watching The prophet says If you watch a scene you are part of that scene If they are killing someone And you stop and watch According to the law of the land you are part of it and according to God you are part of it When a man and woman are misbehaving and you stand and watch According to God you are part of that scene So Saul Was part of the murders Even he kept their clothes, kill him In which body was he doing that this one? But in his theophany God knew him as the first star
Whether you want to do what you want to do.
Destiny means.
Whether you want to do what you want to do.
The way God knew you.
Whether you want to do what you want to do.
Do you know when God gives you your spirit awake?
Do you understand what I am saying?
Go and read Jeremiah.
Do you understand what I am saying?
God said to Jeremiah.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I have heard about Jeremiah the prophet.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah.
Before you were born.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Before you were formed in your mother's womb.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Before your mother was born.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Before there was India.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I, they only knew you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And I, they will record you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
To be a prophet.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Ah?
Yes, sir.
Ah?
Yes, sir.
Ah, ah, you have not heard.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Can I ask you a question?
Do you understand what I am saying?
Is this your pastor?
Do you understand what I am saying?
When did God call him to be a pastor?
Do you understand what I am saying? Before the foundation of the world. Do you want to do what you want to do? Do you understand what I am saying? Yes, sir.
And you cannot change it.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And no one can change it.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Because the things God did in eternity, no one can change it.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Now, as he was going to Damascus.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He made the pit of fire.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Acts, chapter nine, we are not reading.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Then from the light.
Do you understand what I am saying?
There came a voice.
Do you understand what I am saying?
So, Saul.
Saul.
Why are you persecuting me?
Do you understand what I am saying?
But, was in tea beating believers, yes.
But, whether you believe in God?
But what is the voice saying?
But, do you understand what I am saying?
Why are you persecuting?
But, do you understand what I am saying?
That is why.
But, do you understand what I am saying?
Never persecute a believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You are persecuting Jesus.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Never, but biting a believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You are but biting Jesus.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Paul, I mean so being a Pharisee at the bit of light.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He remembered.
Do you understand what I am saying?
That in the book of Exodus.
Do you understand what I am saying?
There was a man.
Do you understand what I am saying?
An Israelite.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Moses.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Who had run away from Egypt.
Do you understand what I am saying?
After killing an Egyptian.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Now he is in the land of Midjan.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Is heading ship.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Then he sees a bush bunny.
Do you understand what I am saying?
But the leaves were not consumed.
Do you understand what I am saying?
So he said.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Let me go near.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And see this thing.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Out of that fire came a voice.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And the voice from the fire.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Even he knew his name.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And the voice from the fire.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Called his name twice.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Moses.
Moses.
Take off, take off your sandals.
Do you understand what I am saying?
For the ground where you are standing is holy.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He looked around.
Do you understand what I am saying?
No human being.
Do you understand what I am saying?
But the voice was come from the fire.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Paul had read that.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He knew.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When the voice calls you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
How many chances?
Do you understand what I am saying? Two times.
Out of light.
Do you understand what I am saying?
It is God himself.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
So he said.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Lord.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Who are you?
Do you understand what I am saying?
And the voice from the light hand side.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I am.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
The boy said, I am Jesus.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Go and read Acts, chapter nine.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Then he told him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You cannot kick against the thorns.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
You cannot fight me and win.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When you attack my children, believers are attacking me.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And he became blind.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Then a voice said.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Going through the city.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I have my servant.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He will pray for you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
So Paul was led now.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Even told them the house where they should go.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Because of destiny.
Do you understand what I am saying?
God knows where you stay.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
He knows the road where you stay.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He told them, go like this, like then gone.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Then, an aniah, a believer came out.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And the Lord told him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Somebody who come prayed for him by the name of Paul, preached to him and so on.
Do you understand what I am saying?
But in verse thirteen.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Ananias answers, God says.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
Verse fifteen.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
Why was the man who was saying?
Do you understand what I am saying?
This man is kidding believers.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Not knowing destiny of Paul.
Do you understand what I am saying?
God said in verse fifteen.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
He is a chosen vessel.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
That is why.
Do you understand what I am saying?
It doesn't matter how your neighbors or some believers look at you, sister.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Brothers, it doesn't matter what some believers or neighbors speak about you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
What is important is.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Does God say about you, sister, and about you, brother?
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
He is an aniah.
Do you understand what I am saying?
A believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Was he a believer? Yes.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He looks on Paul.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I have hate.
Do you understand what I am saying?
He is a bad man.
Do you understand what I am saying?
But what did God, he already judged him, but what did God say?
Do you understand what I am saying?
He is chosen, of course.
Do you understand what I am saying?
No.
Do you understand what I am saying?
No, in the church they are talking about me, so I stopped worshiping. You are not spiritual.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Don't look to what people say about you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Look to what God says about you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
The Bible says.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When God looks at you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
To him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You are precious.
Do you understand what I am saying?
To him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You are his vessel.
Do you understand what I am saying?
To him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You are his temple.
Do you understand what I am saying?
That is why he has put his Holy Ghost in you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
To him.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You will have to save him here in this place.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Don't waste the time.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Listening to an aniah's in this church.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Now, destiny also.
Do you understand what I am saying?
You do not hold it in your hands.
Do you understand what I am saying?
If you, if you ask your pastor tomorrow.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When you were young, what did you want to become? He would, he would tell you, you'd be surprised. I wanted to become an engineer, fly a plane, knee.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Destiny is not in your hands.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Destiny.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Is not what you want to become.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Destiny is what God has already chosen you to do.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
Now.
Do you understand what I am saying?
I move a, can I move a step further?
Do you understand what I am saying?
There are three kinds of people.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Who will come in your life.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When you are young.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When you are a young woman, young man.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When you grow up.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Three kinds of people.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Out of these three.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Only one.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Character.
Do you understand what I am saying?
We will encourage.
Do you understand what I am saying?
We will encourage you.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Ah?
Yes, sir.
Remember, the prophet says that there are how many kinds of believers?
Do you understand what I am saying? Three kinds of believers.
And a believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Make believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
And believers.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Even as you are waiting for God to show you his destiny, watch out for these three. One.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Can you write it somewhere?
Do you understand what I am saying?
There are the good.
Do you understand what I am saying? Good man, chi.
That is the look, man, chi. They're good, right? They're good.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Another group of people you meet in your life are the bad guys.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
What is bad in Telugu?
Chatta Varu.
Yeah, even the name, yeah, sounds like that.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Okay. The third one.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Is the ugly type.
Ugly, and a.
Now.
Yeah, you can explain it.
I'll explain now. Just like we have three kinds of believers, eh?
Do you understand what I am saying?
How many kinds of believers are there?
Do you understand what I am saying?
The good is a type of a believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Can you connect to that?
Do you understand what I am saying?
Don't forget that tomorrow we will be starting now, we will go deep. Do you understand?
Do you understand what I am saying?
The bad.
Chatta Varu.
And believers.
Do you understand what I am saying?
The ugly.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Make believer.
Do you understand what I am saying?
So can I start with the bad? Because the bad are the easiest to know.
Do you understand what I am saying?
The bad will discourage you every day, every month, every year, every week, every hour.
Do you understand what I am saying? Do you understand what I am saying?
Sister, when you stand to sing for your God here.
Do you understand what I am saying?
When the bad come, they say.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Yeah, we heard you sing.
Do you understand what I am saying?
But you, you will never go anywhere.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Your voice.
Do you understand what I am saying?
Is very.
अधि चाला भयंकरंगा विन्पिस्तुन
The way you sing
नु पाडे विदानमु
Horrible
चाला भयंकरमु
Just
अलागा, इनाग
Put you down
निन्न चाला इंजसरेंटे केंदुके पडे से विदांगा माटलाडु तर
Have you ever asked yourself, "Church"?
यप्पे आयन मीरो, मिमल, मिमल, मीर यप्पे आडिगारा संगमो को विषय
Why some sisters
ओका वेल ओका सोहदरी गाने का
Were doing the work of God and supporting the ministry in the church, then they stopped
निसंगा यवरैन गाने का ओका सोहदरी इदिवार को वार जीवितालो देवुड़ नी परिषदलो भागा पन्जेसु, परिचरिजेसु भागा सहायपर्तु, सहायपर्तु, मध्यलो गाने का मे आगीपोते अलांटीवार कोसम एप्पुड़न तेल्सकुन्नार
A brother was supporting the wake, supporting the church, suddenly stops
आसो ओका सोहदरडो
Ah
अतने निसे वंते परिचरिकी भागा साकरिसु, उपयोगपर्तो आय ओका सैवुकरीकी भागा दगरिगा उन्तो सहायपर्तो मच्चलो आगीपोत्तुनाडंते दानी यप्पे ने मेर गमनिचार
He or she was visited by one of these
अलांटीवार दगरीकी यवर वेल्लरंते इलांटी चट्टवारीलो वकरो वेल्ली एदो चेप्पुड़दाल अंदिके वार निरत्ता पाप्पे
I'm going to give an example from our country. I'll not give from here, I don't
नेन भारत देशलो जरिगिनकुन्ने उदाहार ने चप्पन गाने माधेशनलो जरिगिन उदाहार मात्रा चेत्तन
There is a pastor near where I stay and Pastor Charlie, oh, Brother Charlie, certain town there's a very, a pastor
ओका माय ओका स्तरमलो, माय ओका देशमलो नेन अलागे चालीगर उन्तुनायोका पटनानीकी दग्गलो का पास्टरगर उन्दे
In his church
आन संगमलो
At one time
ओका सारी
There was a brother
ओका सोहदर डंडे वार
He had the revelation
अतनकी मंची प्रत्यक्षता कलिगिन वार अतुर
About a pastor
ओका पास्टर कुरेंची मंची अवगाहन उन्नवार
Do you know that the Bible says
मीके देल्सा बाइबिल ने चेप्पंदो
The prophet says
रोक्तु कुड़े ने चेप्पाडो
Okay, I'll quote the Bible
तरवाता बाइबिल ने चेप्पन चुरं
That you believe your salvation
Yeah, yes sir
God has clothed your past
मीर गमनिचन नट्लाइते
Can you understand?
मीर गमनिचन नट्लाइते बाइबिल एम चेप्पंदंते नी, नी ओका रक्षणाने वस्त्राने देवुड़ एन जिसे डंते दानी याजकुलो कु दरिंपचेसे नुन रासुंदी अर्थम इनंतर माने की मी रक्षणाने वस्त्राने देवुड़ यवरकी तरिगिन चाडो नी कापरीकी तोड़ी इंचन चाडायन
Ah, you have not, you have not understood
मीके इनका अर्थम काली
I'm giving you homework. Go and find in the Bible. Tomorrow morning, come and show me
ईरात्री मीको होमवर्क इस्तुनान, इंटिकेलिन तरवाता अधि मेर वेतिकुन देस्करावल अधि एम अन्लेकनमंते दानी रक्षणानु वस्त्रामुनो दानी याजकुलो कु दरिंपचेसिते नी अर्थसुंतु
When they do it last, uh, read it, just the other day we read it with him. Yeah, he knows
सोहदर
What it means is this
कानी, दानी अर्थम इनंते
God
देवुड़े उन्नार आइकड़ा
Took your
देवुड़े इंजस्न डंते
Your salvation, sister
सोहदरी सोहदरणा, मी रक्षणावस्त्राने देवुड़ तीसकुने
Salvation, brother
ओ सोहदरणा, मी रक्षणावस्त्राने
And dressed it
आयन यवरकी दरिंपचेसुनाडंते
Not on your father
मी तंड्रिकी कादु दरिंपचेसुनादी
Not on your mother
मी तल्लीकी कादु दरिंपचेसिली
Not on your uncle
मी मावगारी कादु तर दरिंपचेस
Not on your grandmother
लेकवाते मी अम्मा मको नान
On one person
ओके वक्तिकी दरिंपचेसुनार आयन
Your pastor
अतन नी पास्टर आयुनाडो
So now
आइते इपुडो
When you insult your pastor
मीरो मी पास्टर ने दूशिस्सुन अप्पुडो
You have insulted your
मेर यवन ने दूशिस्सुनारो
Salvation
मी व रक्षणावस्त्राने दूशिस्सुनार मीर
Ask if they have understood
अर्थम इत्याम इन्चे तम
Ah, it's very scary, yeah
चाला भयंकरंगा निपिंचेट्लेदमाने की We can leave, you can put here
Your salvation
मी रक्षणाने वस्त्रम
What is salvation?
असल रक्षणंते इंडी
You're being saved
मीर यलागेते रक्षिंचपर्तुनारो
God has dressed your past
देवुड़े इंजस्न डंते रक्षिंचपर्तुनार तम्यमुना देवुड़े इंजस्न डंते ओका रक्षणाने वस्त्राने नी पास्टरकी दरिंपचेसाडो
Never speak bad about your pastor
अंदिके नी ओका कापरी कोसम यन्नाडो तप्पुगा माटलाडु कोडो
No matter how old he is
अतरू यन्तर रुद्दुडायना, यन्तर तप्पु वैस्गलिगिन वार आयन कापर आइते गाने का वेतरे का माटलाडु अधिकारमेल लेदो
How, how old was David when God called him?
एक विषय माडुकितन, असल देवुड़ दावीदने पिलिचन अप्पुडो, दावीद कैन ने सामसल अंतरो Huh? Seventeen, they are saying
God bless you, sir
देवुड़ मेमल देविचन काके
Ah
निसमेन
Ah, how old are you, sir? Okay, how old are you?
Thirty-three, sir
Thirty-three, two old, seventeen years he called him
पदिएड़ सम्कल करिंग
And the people followed him, now
व्यक्तिगाउन्नाट्वंते दावीदने देवुड़ पिलिच
That brother
अलांटीवार ने कुड़ा देवुड़ एन जिसे डंते प्रजल वेम्बडिंचे विदांगा चेसाड
With that revelation
आ बाइलुपाटु प्रत्यक्षता मानकुंते
I am a witness
नेन कुड़ा दानीको कसाक्षमगा उन्ना
Every month
प्रतिनला
You would go to the pastor's house
प्रतिनला पास्टर गर इंटिके वेल्ली
Go into his kitchen
यक्कड़ गलालंते विश्वासलो, पास्टर गर योका किचिनलो वेल छोड़ालं
Check the food store room
आ किचिनलो आहारम उन्दो, लेदो, अनेदी विश्वासलो छोड़ाले
Cooking oil
अतनी ओका इंटलो वंटावंडुकुने नून उन्दो आइपोइंदो चूस्कोवलंडी
Do you have cook
Yeah, 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 yeah
Do you have cooking oil in India? Do you, ah, you check
माने की नून अंतरा, भारत देशलो वंडुकुने नून उन्नदंतरा
Look at the pastor
नु एन चेलंते पास्टर गर कुड़े यलाउन्तुनारो, यलांते बट्टल दरिस्तुनारो अधि कुड़ा नु गमनिचाल
If he saw the shirt was all deboughty machine
ओका वेल गाने का अतनी ओका शेट्टू चाला पातत आइपोते विश्वासीगा उन्डे गिन्चे डंते
And he had the
कोत्ता शेट्टून कोनिवाल
He had a car
ओका वेल अतरिकी कार उन्नारुकंडी
He never spoke to the pastor on his way. He just dropped to the shops, bought food, cooking oil, sugar, what, bread. People just saw a vehicle come and they begin to afford
ओका वेल गाने का विश्वासीगा उन्नाट्वंते मानामो निसंगा वनी गमनिचे चुस्ते माटलाडुकुन्ना एम चेकुन्ना एन चेलंते नेरुगा शॉपका वेल्ली एदे ते कोदुगा उन्दो आय ओका सैवुकरी ग्रहलो अवि तीसकोचे विदांगा विश्वासलो उन्डाले
And he would die
अक्करा आ विश्वासरे इंचे डंता संगलो दश्यम बागन चेलिन्चाल
Correct die
यलागंते सरयीन दश्यम बागमे चेलिन्चाल
Not like Ananion Safira in Acts 5, stealing, ah, ah
आय ओका अनन्य सप्पीरलने वारो यलागेते देवुड़ दंगलिंचारो अलांटी ओका दश्यम बागन कादं
God, because of what he was doing, remember, God will remember what you took
चुरंडी, मीर चेसे पनुली देवुड़ चोस्तुनाडो गाने का मी ओका परिस्थितलो गुड़ा देवुड़ नेन छोड़ागला समर्थ
He wasn't very educated
अतरू कुड़ा चाला, चाला मंचीगा चदुकुन्नावारंडी
God raised him
देवुड़ अतने पाईकी लेपर
He had a contract
अतनकी ओका कॉन्ट्रैक्ट उच्च
To make receipt books for a big company
ओका पेद्द कंपनी की
You know receipt books, receipt books
पेद्द कंपनी की आय ओका रसीद पुस्तकाल तयार चेसे, आय ओका प्रिंट वेसे ओका, आय ओका कॉन्ट्रैक्ट उच्च
He, he bought a four-by-four car
अतरूकी आय ओका पेद्द कार कुनुकुनाड
And whenever the pastor, he would say, "Pastor, take it, use it"
यप्पु जूसन ओका वेल पास्टर गर कावालंते एम अन्यवाडंते पास्टर गरो मीके यप्पु कावाल्स उच्चन ना कारेश्पोने जप्पे वार
What was his destiny?
इतने एन्दुके जप्पुनाडो, इतने गम्यस्तलम एम इटी
Even Jesus Christ in his ministry, he had those who supported him
चुरंडी, मीर गमनिस्ते गाने का
Sorry, sorry, sorry Can you switch it on, please? Sorry, sorry, I touched it. Hallelujah! How many know Jesus?
एसु कृष्ण तम्यम देल्सन निकड़ा एसु कृष्ण परिचरिलो कुड़ा, कन्तमंदी एसु कृष्ण की साक्रिय चिनवार उन्नार
Do you know there were people who supported Jesus Christ? Ah Sorry, I disturbed it Switch it on Hallelujah! Are you with me? Jesus Christ There were sisters who supported the ministry
सोहदरीलो कन्तमंदुन्ने वारो, वारो एसु कृष्ण ओका परिचरिलो साहिपन्नवार
Not using church money, they are only money from their husbands
डप्पुरी कादं दी वार वारिंदी, वार संता डप्पुने वार एसु कृष्ण ओका परिचरिलो कच्चीपर्तुनारो
What are their names? God bless you, brother
वार पेल इनंते
Mary Magdalene
I don't know, uh, I don't know pastor, sorry, who sweeps here? Do you have, is it believers who clean the church?
Ekadha veswasa sreena thudheshedi?
Oh, you have an employee?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nili baso lekuda.
You come and clean, eh?
Miru chivisvasara gundhi, enya saragadu kochi parichar jasan, nesmena?
They will visit you.
Varin jasan ante, nu parichar jasanapura chaddavari baitne chenjendustar, konnayasustar.
They do not come, uh-uh.
Nu parichare jasanapura kochi varni nindisturb chirendi.
They will come and see what your home or work.
Vellu kochi akkadalsukuntar ante, nee pani dagaro, nee inta dagaruko, vechi kalsukuntarande chaddavari.
God bless you brother.
Devu nindivichunuga sadhara.
Why do you ask them? Why have you come to see me?
Asalu varne gana kani vadikite, miru myinti endukochareya, anadikite.
Why are you all is cleaning the church? Are there no other people?
Emantrante, eppudu jossina sangala nuve parichar jastanavante, inkayavro leera, anaduta.
When you walk in God's destiny, he will reward you.
Miru gamaniste, devu nekka gamyastalanaki, vayipaki, miru nadchukuntu velte gana ka, devu du, meko bahumaanani, anibagala day.
Hallelujah!
Hallelujah!
Sister, they will discourage you.
Sadhri, chalamandini no, ala nin nirutsa parichachu.
Tell them.
Varikin chappalante.
You keep quiet.
Nu nor muskoman chappar.
I know my calling, my destination.
Na pillupentho na ku delisu, na gamyamento na ku delisu, nuvnu nor muskaman chappale.
Now, eppudu. I'll take one example from the Bible.
Bible lo ninnchokka udahana gamikichepa.
And introduce the one who talk about tomorrow morning and afternoon, okay?
Iroju ueka udahana kosam cheppe, rapeu udhe mu sainkalamo, a vishyalu bhaaga vevarinchukundam, sarena?
But in the afternoon, I'll go in details about those who discard, you know, the bad, the ugly, tomorrow afternoon.
Kani rapeu sainkalamatramu, i chaddavari yala nirutsa parusharo, yala untundo, varimatali napura yemavutundo, anedhi, rapeu sainkala kotalanichu.
And they are so clever.
Var yantateli vena varante.
They caught the Bible message seventy percent, don't go hundred, uh-uh.
I chaddavari enjasanante, dabbai shatham varuko Bible lo ninnchi, pravakta chepina matal enjasanante, vakri karissaran.
And if you don't read and pray.
Miru gana ka pradhanapurukanga undi, anudinamo devuni vakyani chadavaleeni variga unte gana ka.
They will discourage you.
Var ninnu nirutsa parichayuchu.
But God has called you for a purpose.
Kani, aina padiki, devu ninnu vaka udesham kosam pelichadae.
Okay, before I come to that person.
A vekthi kosan ninn cheppe mundu.
Can I show you the purposes God does for you?
Asalu devu meko kosam etu vanti udeshani kaligunadu chupinchamantara?
I can show you two lists.
Rendu chotla ninnu chupinchamantara?
Huh?
Aminantara?
Okay, let's read.
Sare chadu don chodan.
Romans, let's start with Romans twelve.
Romilukrasnapatrika, panandodhyamlo praramichukundam.
Romans, so you write purposes in my destiny, so you, you, you go home, pray, God will show you.
Miru gamaniste, i vishyalu gana ka me rase petukunapura, alanti nirutsa parichavare varanagana ka me jyutunakochi napura, variki laakanala me chupinchuchu.
I said Romans chapter what?
Romilukrasnapatrika.
Yeah, Romans twelve.
Panandodhyamo.
Hallelujah!
Chapdama gattika, hallelujah!
You know pastor, I'm trying to squeeze time tomorrow, I want to encourage also purpose for the sisters, maybe, okay, I'll try to mention it tonight.
Yes sir, yes sir.
Alright, so let me just give you the purposes, then tomorrow I can pick up on Joseph, okay?
Neeno.
Let me start, okay.
Neeni raatri, devu me jyutunak chupistuna etu vanti udeshamento, devu meko etu vanti gamyastalanisataparchado, iraatri meko chupistano, rapeu udhe kalamo yossebu kosam maname nichukunda.
Let's go to Romans twelve.
Chodandi Romilukrasnapatrika, panandodhyamo.
Are you there?
Andro tisera. Yes sir.
Okay, let's look at, I'll, I'll let my brother read it because of time.
Yeah.
Because if we read, the two of us will take more time, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, I'm in Romans twelve.
Romilukrasnapatrika, panandodhyamo.
Verse four, you read from verse four up to, uh, nine.
Naalva vachsham nandi.
No, up to ten.
Padavachshavarku chadukunadai cheschodandi. Vakasharidamlo manaku aneka avayamale yundinano, i avayamalanniti, annitini, vakkate pani, yala gu undado, alage, anekulamayana manamo, krystilo vakasharidamaga undi, vakani, vakani koru kovaru, prattekamuga, avayamale yunnamu. Yes sir. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Manamuka, manakannukreempa badina krupa chippuna. Veeru krupa varamalakalina varame yunnamu kanuka, pravachinavaramite, veswasa paramanam chappuna, pravachintamo, paricharete, paricharilono, bodinchuvarate, bodinchutulono, hetchirinchuvarate, hetchirinchutulono, pani, pay vicharanu chewadu, jagartatonu, karuninchuvaru, santoshamatonu, pani jerigipavale. Me prema, nishkapadama nedyayunda valeno, chaddadanani, sahenchukuni, manchidanani hatukunadi, sahodara prema vishyamalo, vakani andundu, anuragamalo galavaray, ganata vishyamalo, vakaranakudu, gopagayaenchukunadi.
Up to verse what?
Ten.
Ten. Have you heard the church?
Andro vinna ra sangama?
Have you heard?
Andreki vinamadinda?
Have they heard?
Yes sir.
I don't know, tell you good Bible, but it has mentioned different things, eh?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Huh?
Yes sir. Chala vishyalu ekadu manak chaptunavara dientlo?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not saying you are a pastor, no.
Keavano, ni vaka pastor vayene, anchepinna?
As a church, you are many members, but you are one body, one churches, are true.
Miru gamanichinatleite, devu ganeem nirpistunadante, vaka sangamalo chala mandi sabilonapadiki, varandaru yekasharidamaga unnaro.
When you know your destiny.
Miru kuda me gamyanniganaka, miru gutterikite.
The work of the pastor is easy.
I pastergar chese paricharya nedy, chala suluga chese asaran.
Because there are some people.
Endugante chala mandi prajal enjasanante, sangala unnavare enjasanante.
They are very good at, as you have read these gifts.
Manamuk chaduina, iyoka varamalo, chaduina.
Problem, go to that.
Idigo, i tamashanki kundiyabati, nu asahodaragirik velu, ancheptar pastorgar, nesmena? Chappakal rantara, a varal unnapura jaragala da? Yes sir.
Did the brother read all those destinies?
Iyoka gamyamalannikuda, a sahodar chadukununtarantara? Yes sir.
These are not be done by trees, it's people in the church.
I vishyalanikuda raibanna vishyalu, baitunna chetlaga dandi, chese paricharya, sangamalo unnasabile, i paricharya jasan.
Another place to read.
Inkovishyan chaptunachodan.
And the way God has done it is Romans twelve, one Corinthians twelve, now let's go to one Corinthians twelve.
Modritikorindlo krasnapatrika, panandodhyamlo kuda, devu marlayen chaptunadu jata vendam.
Are you in one, sorry, one Corinthians twelve?
Modritikorindlo krasnapatrika, panandodhyam tisera, chapthara gattika.
You, you.
Hallelujah!
You read from verse four.
Naalva vachsham nandi, manamuk chadukunandate.
To eleven, uh, I'm to twelve.
Naalva nunchipanandu varu chadukundam. Krupa varamalu, naanavedamalu unnavagani, um, atma vakkate, um, maruyu paricharul, naanavedamalu unnavagani, prabhu vakkade, um, naanavedamalainav, karibulukalavagani, andarlo no, annitini jerigichuvaru, devu vakkade, um, aina no, andari prayojanamakoruku, prativani ke, atma prattekshata, anukreempa badichunadi. Yala gana ka vakkarika, atma molanga, bhuti vakyamunu, maruyakana ki, a atmanasrithna, jana vakyamunu, maruyakana ki, a atmalani veswasa manu, maruyakana ki, a vaka atmalani swasta parichuvaru manu, maruyakana ki, abdu karibulu cheyu, shaktiyu, maruyakana ki, pravachinavaramu, maruyakana ki, atmal vivayachanu, maruyakana ki, naanaveda basalu, maruyakana ki, basala attam chepu shaktiyu, anukreempa badiyavavi. Aina no, vi tannitini, a atma vakkade, tanachittam chappuna, prativani ke, prattekamuga, punchichichu, kari siddikaluga jechu nodu.
Hallelujah!
Chapdama, hallelujah!
One church.
Vaka sangalo.
Many members.
Chala sabiluntaro.
Different what?
Vere vere varalu, devu disunadu prativani.
Given by.
Yavusunaro, devu de a varali sunnadaina?
To help in the wake of God, so he can be resting.
A varali indigessunadante, sangakapariki konchum entante, vishrantide doragana ke, i sabile ke, i varali sunnadaina?
This side also.
I pakka nagodu chodan, sri lakhi.
Mary Magdalene.
Magdalene, marian chodan.
Joanna.
Johanna chodan.
Susannah.
Susanna chodan.
They went to their husbands.
Var enjasanante, varibartalagiri boi.
There is work at church.
Var eman cheppe rantaya, idigo, mana sangalo ipanundi.
To buy this and this.
A yaka pani cherkatani, i yaka parikaralausru, mana oipunali.
Give me the money, we do that.
Ma, ma double vandi, adi mana mana kutuma tarupuna chaddama? Anali.
Wherever Jesus went.
Yesu ekkadakate velledu.
They got permission of their husbands.
Var enjasananta, sri lo, tanabartalagira, anumudithiskuni.
Supported they went.
Var enjasananta, paricharla sahayakulaga undevarendi.
They gave food, they gave money, they gave, they told their husbands.
Var yedete kaligina varia, aaharanavari punchpetar, lakvode danani punchpetar, pratidani unnadanli, varenjasanante, parichare kosamu, varihetchichar, varibartalaki kona, a vishyalu nirpincharan.
How many were of Elijah?
Eliya kosam antamandu vinna rantaro?
He used to walk a long distance to preach.
I Eliya enjasanante, chala suduramayana pranthani ke veli, vakyam bodinchunadi velto undevad.
Come in the morning.
Odhemochi.
Preach two services.
Arrendu kotala vakyam cheppe, tirigi, intikalal chala duramadi.
Then one sister in the Bible.
Apurubaby lo kasa hodari.
If it's true, you say amen, told their husband.
Adi nesamayate mira amen chappal, a barthakeeman chepinante.
I see that this man.
Ayah, nen chusani manushudu.
Is a servant of God.
Ina devu ne dasudan, namutunann.
He comes in the morning, goes hungry and things.
Odhem veli, sainkalamosunadu, alanti samyamalo, itanik antakalesundoo, anadham.
Can't we build him a room on top of our house?
A barthata imantundante, ayah, mana intipaina, athani kosamoga gadikattachu kadana digil.
Your husband will support you in God's destiny.
Nesanga, niuvgana ka, devu ne parichare kosamu, ne bartani edhadi gina gani, athani ke kuda vaka gamyastala mundiganaka, athadu kuda emantadante, sare kattu anjekta.
The husband said.
Barte emantadu, sarenadu.
Here is the money.
Idigo, double dishko.
Go to a build, I began.
Tarvata varenjasanante, a yaka gadini katticha.
She said.
Amandi?
When he comes in the morning, no breakfast, can we be giving breakfast and lunch and supper?
Tarvata imandante, a gadikattinderu, ayah, athanudhem veltunadu, vakyam cheppe tirigi sainkalamosunapura, akalesundandi, kabati, udhem veltunapura, manu alpaharam ittama, ante, bartema nardelsa, sare ittama nara.
Should prepare.
Ame enjasinante, adi prati aharanisataparchin.
Like eat tandoori chicken, apollo, whatever, whatever, and then one day.
Ekadu yala gate, miru, a yaka tanduri mansal undarao, apollo fish undarao, lakvode yinni rakala vantal undarao, a vantalande, a sri enjasinante, athani kitischichin.
The man of God was coming from church, very tired with his servant, he has.
Eppudu te devu nekka dasudu, alisipoi, a yaka vakyani bodinchu, eppudu te tiriga grohane ke vasunadu, a samyamantundame.
As they were passing.
Athadu, akadnichiprayanam velsukapura, antundame.
Man of God.
O devu ne manushuda.
Come in and rest.
Idigo, lonikochi vishrantide diskondi, an.
He went in.
Aina loniki praveshinchi.
She gave him food.
Athani kenesin, aharan pettindame.
Their husband greeted him.
A barthakoda athani kivandanal cheppeado.
Then he says.
Sarvataname.
Tired up to go and reach home and sleep, say, no, 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 there is a room on top.
Aine emantandante, chala alisipayano, kabati intikeli, nen vishrantide diskavali, ani Eliya eppudu tenadu, a, a sahodarantandi, ayah, ledu, miru ekkadu velletu, endugante, me kosamu, vishrantide diskodam kosamu, ma kutuma moga gadini kataincha mayaan.
Then Elijah said.
Apur Eliya antunad.
Does your husband know?
Eliya antunad, nee bartadi nerigudunad, aune ayah, athani kuda tellsandi.
They went upstairs.
Athanupaike veli.
He found a bed.
Athani kenchusandante, vaka manthani jusad akkada.
And a table, so he can write.
Akkada, vaka table jusad, endugante, a table meko chini, devu ne vakyani dyanichada.
Is that in the Bible?
Adi Bible lo ne unnantara, i vishyalu.
According to destiny.
Me gamya, charavalsina gamyani ke, a madriga chustae.
God knew, I would send Elijah to preach.
Devu nekki bhaaga tellsandi, Eliya ke yinkavalo, variki, sakarinchidaniki, yavani pampalo, devu ne bhaaga tellsu.
God knew, he will stay very far away.
Devu nekki bhaaga tellsu, atra chala dorangane, vassasana ne, devu nekki bhaaga tellsu.
But I raised the brother and the sister in the church to support it.
Kani, a indjasanante, aina gamyastanani ke chere antavaruko, kontamandhi sahodarli, sahodarli, enjasanante, paricharla sahayapattanike paikalipthadae.
Then.
Tarvata.
When you wake, you walk in your destiny, God rewards you, is that true?
Okuvalan nisanga gana ka, me gamyastalanaki, miru nadchukuntu velte, devu de tagina bahumaanani, me kesadae.
Ela, Elijah, is it Elijah?
Yes sir.
He said, I should got a child.
Ame ki tarvata, beddejenminchantra?
Ah, no, 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 no.
Hmm?
He said, call her.
A, aine emanantara, amen filavandi.
What you have done to me.
Nakku yedete, ne vuchesavo.
In destiny, you have done it to God.
Ni gamya stanani ke, veltonakramalu, nu devu nekcheesavo.
You have no child.
Ni ko bedda leer gana ka.
Next year.
Vachesamasunamo.
This month.
I nela lo ne.
You will have a boy.
Ni ko vaka bedda putta dadu.
Did it happen?
Adi jerigindantara?
Was the devil happy?
Apur devu santhoshinga unnada, kani, dayamu santoshinga untunda.
He made the boy sick, the boy died, what did she do?
A time enjasinhi, a yaka bedda, putta na putta, chennipo yavaganga chesinhi, aina gana me chesinhi, enjasinhi?
Coin, coin, coin.
Apurantande, aina filavandi.
And she went to Elijah.
Ame tirigi, Eliya dagirik velili.
That boy.
Aappan diskuni.
Is dead.
Aappach chennipo yedakana.
Elijah said.
Eliya antunad.
In eternity, there is no death, I'm coming, let's go.
Eliya emanantante, kangarbadu gama.
Hallelujah!
Ni tietulu marlamay ledu, nen ostana badanara.
And what did she do?
Ame enjasinhi, delisa?
She took the dead child.
A yaka chennipo yavabedda diskuni.
Not in a bedroom.
Atha ame tanapadakagadi lo kavala ledugani.
But in the room, she had prepared for Elijah.
Ekkadate, Eliya kosam aharan sataparchindo.
And laid him on his bed.
Akkada tanamanchamme vedapettinadu ne, endugo delisa?
She had done revelation.
Ame ki bailipadu undakana?
The devil, a servant of God, died, he.
Devu ne saava kuda denneite, murtadu.
The anointing remains there.
A apishayaka, akkada nelchi vettunde.
And the boy.
Aappay emayedapura?
Did he come back to life?
Tirigi sachivanga devu tirigichada?
Yes.
Aunandi vachad.
Why?
Endugo delisa?
Destiny.
Gamya stanamanedi.
Devil can fight you.
Dayamu, dariki vetregang, antana poradan chenivand.
Death can come.
O, kadnemara botundi.
But destiny.
Kani, ni gamya stanamatramu.
Neba, nebba, nebba.
Yenadu, yavaru kuda machalero.
So tomorrow, we start our subject.
Anduke, rapeu udhe kalamo, mana nesamayana amshani chepkundama.
God bless you, God bless.
Devu ne meval samruthiga divichunuga. Devu ne kistodragaluguna, endu man santoshinga unnaray, santoshingalo chaplakadu devu ne mahambardam. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Endu mani gamyani chere, markamalunara, sadhri, sadhalat, gamyani chere, markamalunara, innena atangal raavachu, innena addu raavachu, kani, me gamyani ke charakunda, yavaru kuda apalero. Devu ne kistodragaluguna, me gamyani ke charralante, mir chayvalsina panlanu cheskundu, vallalapura, adi, mir gutupattal, mevala vala balahena barusunaru, yavaru mevala pracha hissunaru, yavaru mevala halan jassunaru, i atmal mir gutinchali, balahena barusunavali, jagatka chuskavali, ades samyamalo, man balaparchipadutu, pracha hinchipadutu, gamyani ke charrali, endu man gamanistunara, me andariko gamya mandantara, ente, me gamya mo, me gamya munda, adi, gamya mukile, kramalu, mevala balaparcho, balaparcho lunnaru, me balaparcho luguhtinchali, alage, balahena barusunal, gutinchali, endu man garamothu, lala gutinchalande, parishuddhaapchadman, nimpa badha, parishuddhaapchadman, nimpa badtene, man gutinchukalam, yala ante, atma yala panyasundoo, man addu barutuntundi, paricharilu mundukel tonapura, man venakalagutavunta, man balahena barusavunta, nu vadijehastana, vijijehastana, ventukurigandana, venakalagutar, venakalaginapura, man lagu, venakilte, danu vallo che, falitani jossunam, kani, a atpar gamanichi, paricharilu venak velakunda, gamya vebu nadipachipadute, danidharo che, benefits kuda man chossam, devu ne kistodragaluguna, anduke, me yaka gamya mono, nichyamga, me guhtinchal, but, gutinchal, me, me gamya ne guhtinch, a gamya vevadanga, vunda guhtinch, mevala yavaru balahena barusunara, yaka, yavaru, venakalagutunara, chodal, endu man garamothu, iraatri chala, adbutman vishyal, amin, devu ne saava kuda dar, devu ne man ikchadana, namutunannu, udhe kalamo, rep sainkalam kuda, man meetings unayagunuka, further kadan, subject ni konsaagisana, yettunaru, adi, paricharilu, me yaka bagamayamayundo, gutinchali, a paricharini chesundu, chesunapura, aneka mandi, anakalagoluntaro, adi, devu ne koda, dani pracha hinchavani, kuda padatar, miru, me paricharilu munduk veladani ke, mevala pracha hinchavani, devu ne padatar, ades samyamalo, me paricharilu mundukusagakunda, devu ne megeedetichadu, yavaramunaitichadu, yek krupa varanichadu, a paricharilu munduk velanakunda, nu gamya mukucharakunda, nindu venakalagadani ke, satanu koda kondamandana, point jasan, so, venitini guhtinchalande, nu atma doran nimpa bada, nu nimpa badinapura, nichyamga, nu chala jagartagadugilvesto, endu man inno jappachu, kani, nu vayamayonnavo, nichyamga, ne ko bailipadraavali, ne gamya mayamayundo, ne ko bailipadgavali, a gamya vepeman nadipachipadali, endu man santoshisavunam, God bless you, devu ne me divichunuga, thank you for the wonderful word, my brother, God bless you, thank you, thank you so much, i samyamalo, andro lechilabana, late, man pradhan yeskamoginsukundam, pati okrakoda, samarpichkundam, mevradyalo. Pati okrakoda, samarpichkundi, me gamya maal ready, setaparchipadundi, adi, setaparchipadina etu vanti, gamya mukuku, mevala pracha hinchadani ke, devu ne kondamandana, point jessunte, mevala venakalagadani ke, satanu kondamandana, venakaparajasavunadu, adi, kachitenga, man parishuddhaapchondo, nimpa badhi, man gamya vebu nadipachipadali, man sana vebu nadipachipadali, oh, na priya sadhri, sadhalara, oh, nisanga, pauliki, oh, devu nekka gamya ne airport jeshad, oh, devu ne namamu, ni mittamu, oh, athana barinchal, devu ne namamu, devu ne namamu, moyali, oh, ida, gamya mukakadupadaguna, yavaru kuda, oh, ananilantuvaru, ekadu agipavali, ananila, ananilantuvaru, man guhtinchali, oh, man kanna destiny man kundi, man ko vaka gamya mundi, a gamya mukuch velakunda, aneka mandi, nerasparusharo, aneka mandi, balahena barusaro, kani, yavaru, balahena parichvaraga, undodo, vakarini, vakaru, vakarini, vakarupracha hinchegatuka, oh, vaka sahodarini, maro vaka sahodarudu, vaka sahodarini, maro vaka sahodari, oh, prativakarini, vakarukakarupracha karanaga, unto, oh, manamandru kuda, man gamya mukuch charavalsvaraga, vunno, oh, prabha makusainchayandi, prabha jappai, pradhanchayandi, parishuddhaapchondo nimpani prabha, ne atmal doramalu, apishaychinchandi prabha, oh, ma sahodarini, pracha hinchali, ma sahodarini, venakalaguradu, na sahodarini, venakalaguradu, ne, na sahodarini, kuda pracha hinchali, bharaya bartalu, pracha hinchabadali, oh, vakyamukorake, aikka gamya mukorake, bharaya bartalu, pracha hinchabadali, oh, nisanga, devu ne manatomatlaratavunadu, oh, yenakalage, atmalani, guhtinch, oh, watni chappandi, oh, nu vaagu, chappandi, oh, sadhri, sadhalara, vakarnakarupracha hinchkundi, bharaya bartalara, vakarnakarupracha hinchandi, oh, manam gamya mukuch charabothunamani, vakarnakarupracha hinchkundi, oh, na sadhrida, oh, ni smakasahodarini, pracha hinchu, oh, na sahodari, ni pakka nasahodari, pracha hinchu, oh, manamandru, gamya mukuch charabothunamo, manamandru, gamya mukuch charabothunamo, oh, devu nekka manak gamya nichadu, okandamayakamya nichadu, prativakarakoda samarpichkundi, prativakarakarapichkundi, mevradyalo, chenapradhanchayandi, oh, prabha, oh, devana, gamya nekchcharanaprabha, oh, a parishuddhaapchondo nimpu prabha, ne nela kadralalamu, ne vichchutandri, oh, me nela mundukusagala, ne vichchuprabha, ne, prativakarakoda, prabhusamarpichkundi, pati okrakoda, prabhusamarpichkundi, oh, nisanga, a visavatavodo, sangamalo, ni vaka bagamayonnavo, ishani ke paricharilu, ni vaka bagamayonnavo, oh, devu nekka varamichunte, oh, devu nekka, oh, gapa pani chunte, a pani lo, aneka mandi, venakalagachu, aneka mandi, venakalagachu, oh, kani, sadhrida, oh, kani, sadhridanu, munduke sagipavali, oh, i paricharilu, vakarnakarupracha hinchali, oh, songaladana, dickens pracha hinchavu, dickens sangampracha hinchali, oh, sangamalu, oh, dickens pracha hinchali, prativakarikakarupracha hamtona, oh, vakarnakarakalakalakundetatuka khadu, vakarnakaru, oh, vetushichukunetatuka khadu, oh, vakarnakaru, oh, vetregichukunetatuka khadu, venaketamatal chepkunetatuka khadu, vakarino kuru pracha hisso, chaya chaya, katu kalipkuni, vakarnakarupracha hinchkuni, oh, nisanga, manamunduki, a gapa gamya stanani ke charavalsvaraga, vunno, prativakarakoda samarpichkundi, purshul, purshul, sri, sri, me chethalpatkunak, chethalpatkundi, vakarnakarupracha hinchkundi, oh, vakarnakarupracha hinchkundi, oh, na sahodarini, pracha hissano, oh, na sahodarini, pracha hissano, manamandru, pracha hinchbadi, devu ne paricharilu, vaka gamya stanani, manu charadamo, ani vakarikakaruprahadhan yeskundi, vakarikakaruprahadhan yeskundi, vakarikakarupracha hinchkundi, oh, devu ne manu gapa sana, nevathunadu, gapa destiny, nevathunadu, vakarikakaruprachamulgari, vakarikakaruprakulgani, vakarikakosakarupvenak chepu matalgani, oh, man godhu, oh, man godhu, vakarino kuru pracha hinchkundamo, pati okrakoda, kuru pracha hinchandi, oh, ni sahodarini, pracha hinchku, oh, ni sisterne, pracha hinchu, oh, bharani, bartalupracha hinchu, oh, sadhridani, bharini, pracha hinchu, manu destiny kela bothunamo, okka gamya nikelabothunamo, oh, deva nekka sahayamudai cheprabha, ne parishuddhaapchondo, man nimpu prabha, oh, vakal, venakalage, chetam, man onakodu, mevala pracha hinchimundukuskeletatuka, man ondalini, prativakarakoda samarpichkundara, pati okrakoda samarpichkundara, vakarnakarupracha hinchkundara, hallelujah! Thank you Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! Endadbutman vishyani, devu disunadu, sadh, samanjemanritalo, oh, chala chakkan vishyani, oh, manandri ko puyogupadi vishyani, oh, devu zedu dar, manatomatladanadu, iraatri, manandru pracha hinchkundam, gutinchandi, venakalage, atmal gutinchandi, venakalage, atmal gutinchandi, pracha hinchi, atmal gutinchandi, oh, na sadhrida, ni sahodarini, pru pracha hinchu, ni sahodarini, pru paikilepo, alage, sahodari, ni sisterne, pru kuda paikilepo, oh, priyamayana bhatta, ni bharini paikilebitavundu, oh, priyamayana bharaya, ni priyamayana bartan paikilebitavundu, oh, sangama, oh, miru pracha karanaga, undani, oh, devu ne mananadi, divichunuga, devu ne manasru divichunuga, hallelujah, hallelujah! Let's pray, pradhan yeskundam. Pradhan yeskundam, samarpichkundavellande, kandoni, samarpichkundavellande, pradhan yeskundam. Parishuddhu vina tandri mahonatuda, sarvunatuda, sarvshaktamantuda, stutuluku pathruda, aaradaleki yokeedani ke, stotralu, iraatri, ni dinasavakundeprabha, oh, mama jilukunu nadipichi. Prabha mahogu destiny, iti varike, yo thalli garbhamalu, rupechabadakamunupu, oh, ni aalochal, ni lo, me vunnapura, ma kova gamya stanamnerne inchavu, oh, new airport jeshina, gamya stanamu, me me marskolemo, oh, deva, antakapa, gamya stanani airport jeshad, nix totral chelissunamo, oh, devu, nekka sangamalo, oh, gapa avayavalkamalu inchavudandri, oh, krupa varbalama, kichavu deva, oh, ni paricharilu, me mundukusagutu, oh, manji sakshamutu, oh, devu, vakarnakarupracha hinchkuntu, ni paricharilu, munduk veladani ke, ni ko padbutman krupmaka, grechandi, binalandani, divinchandi, miraasru rinchandi, prativakar, varivari stanamalu guhtinch, varivari stanamalu guhtinch, mundukusage, prupraichchandi, prabha, yavaru, ni vakarakarupracha hinchukuradakada, oh, deva, ni sanidilo, me vakarnakarakalakalakko, kududu, me pracha karanaga, munduk velalali, attikropamandri kida ichchamani prabha, kuduchinabedlandani, divinchandi, endo chakka prabha, oh, vakyamuni, viverinchidu, bodechidu, dasud, John Kama, gana divinchandi, aina sangamunai, parichanani, kutumanasru rinchandi, devu, no, tinalaka, kutumamaluku, sangamaluku, oh, deva, dorangaga, undi, parichar yaasavunar, ni atmaluni, shaktani, ni balamunu, oh, ni kumadu, onchupar kurtunu, inga munipati, kotigalo prabha, charagaboye, kuli galo prabha, ni atma chetani, shakticheta, ni kumadu, mir vadukundi, balaparchandi, apishaychinchandi, poorthani, kumadu, hastal kapukissunam, alage, prabha, tajmajesritma, sadhalu, tijisgandu, balaparchandi, ni kumadu, kudantobalahinidu, vunadu, sampuranga swasta parichandi, oh, tan bharaya bedalanu, tan sampurna kutuman, balaparchandi, mukkengi, dinasanganaasru rinchandi, pati, okramu kuda, a gamya mukorke, pani chedumugaka, a gamya mukunadipachipadumugaka, deva, ni krupamandri kida ichchamani prabha, devi raatri, kudi mantal todugunaprabha, tandri, ni ke stotramalu chelissunam, repodyammo, repusayinkalabukudi klo koda, ni dinasavukun, nela betukuni, sangamalaku, kavalisinam, matalanu, ni kumadu, darama, kevandiprabha, vadukku, divane karvane, mataladachchandi, vadukasro, karvane, mataladachchandi, poorthani, hastal kapukissuprabha, chakka, vatavarma, kana grechamani, deva, nekka, oh, deva, ni krupasalki, kuduklapukissunam, madad, gudugadbutanga, jeriginchinandu, ni ku vandanal, devu, repu, rendu kudukalo, magutodugunamani, adbutugara, jeriginchamani, imadad, gudugjeriginchandu, ni ke stuti, mahima, ganda, prabha, li ke chelissu. देवर रेपू रिंड कुडिगलो मनक तोड़गुण्डा मणे, अद्भुत गरंगा जरिगिंच्चमणि, ई मदद गुड़ जरिगिंचनंदु, निके स्तुतीमहमगन्ता प्रभ्यालीके चेलिस्सु प्रभ्याइना, एसु कृष्यु नाममलो प्रार्थिसुनामो आमेन, महादेवुड़ू मनप्रभ्य नेसु कृष्यकत्तमयन कृपा, ई रात्रि वाक्यमित्र देवजर्डलु, अनुवादन जसिन्ना सऊदरलु, इगड़न देन संगमुनो, आयन कृप सदा तोड़गा उण्डी, आ गपप गम्यस्तानमुने पु देवुड़ू निच्यमगानु कृपतारण निरपिचुलुका आमेन, आमेन, संगम आमेन जयपुरुका आमेन, अंदर किश्चलो, किश्चलो, देवुड़ू नन देविची आश्रुदिचुलुका, अंदर God bless you